All right. I see it's 6:02, so I would like to call the meeting to order. And let's do, I can see everybody, but let's do a brief road call for the, for the minutes. So we'll start with District One. District Two.
Here.
District. Bobby's here for District Three.
District Three is there.
District Four.
Jane.
Well, Jane, can you hear us?
Yes, I said this is Jane.
Okay, all right, okay. I'm working off a hotspot, so sometimes it's a little delayed. All right. Do we have any others that are participating from the community that we know of?
I see four attendees.
There are some participants that are listening in, you know, we'll have the public comment period and the public hearing later on in the meeting, but there are some members of the public that are listening in.
Okay. For those of you on the line, thank you for joining the Planning Commission meeting. Members of the public will be able to share their comments when we get to the public hearings sections of this meeting. Each opportunity for public comment will be announced. If you would like to participate, or if you are participating via Zoom on your computer, you may raise your hand using the Zoom controls or announce your interest to announce your interest in participating. If you are dialing in, press star nine on your phone. And once you raise your hand, you will be recognized at the appropriate time to speak. Okay, let us move forward. Mr. Hall, will you please give us an invocation?
All right. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and direction in our collective efforts to be good stewards for the public trust, make fair and wise decisions, and to keep Powhatan a wonderful place to live and work. Let us keep in our thoughts and prayers those individuals and families that have been affected by the virus. We ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, very nice. Let's move on to our administrative items. The first one being, is there anyone who would like to propose or an action or amend the agenda? Hearing, no suggestions. We'll move on to Section B. Let's go through the approval of the minutes. You were sent the minutes from March 3, 2020. Are there any requests to change to those minutes? And if they're, well, let's start, are there any requested changes? I have none. None.
None.
All right, well, now, may I have a motion to approve and then a second, please?
I move to approve the minutes for March 3. I second.
Second, thank you. But, and then let's go ahead and vote. District One, Vicki?
Yes.
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five is me, yes. Minutes are approved. Now, approval of the minutes for the workshop, we just did the meeting, we'll do the workshop. Are there any requested changes to the report as to the conduct of the workshop, workshop from March 3? Hearing none, may I have a motion for approval and a second, please?
Motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor will, will go by District, District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Aye.
Five? Aye. The motion is approved and carries. Thank you all very much. Now we have our public comment period. The general public comment period is now open. If you would like to make a comment related to planning matters that are not on the agenda, please raise your hand at this time using the Zoom controls, or, as I mentioned before, press star nine on the phone. Your comments, as usual, will be limited to three minutes. And once you raise your hand, you will be called on to speak.
No one has raised their hand right now.
Okay, let's give them another minute. We need the Jeopardy song. All right. Since no one has moved forward to speak, we will close the public comment section. And we will move on to our public hearings as we have no old business to review tonight. Andrew, would you provide, provide an overview of case number 20-01-RZC Birkenout LLC?
So the first and only public hearing for tonight is case number 20-01-RZC. That is a request by Birkenout LLC to amend the proffer statement associated with three parcels in the far eastern part of the county. Tax that parcel is 43-33, 43-33A, and 43-35. Those parcels were rezoned, light industrial, I won with proffered conditions, and Commerce Center CC with proffered conditions in September of 2018 as part of case number 18-04-RZC. Again, those properties are located in the far eastern part of the county, southwest of the intersection of US Route 60, Anderson Highway, and State Route 671 County Line Road. In particular, the applicant would like to amend proffered condition number one. That proffer condition references conceptual plan for the industrial portion of the project. The applicant is coming to amend that conceptual plan because you'd like to move the entrance for that particular phase of the project farther west along US Route 60. The Department of Community Development is recommending approval of this request for the reasons listed in the staff report. The applicant's representative, Chris Shust with Ballzer and Associates, is here today. He does not have a presentation planned, but he is here to answer any questions after we hold the public hearing and have further discussion.
So as I understand it from your comment, Andrew, then you want to have the public hearing first prior to making a comment.
That's correct. The applicant indicated they do not have a presentation tonight, but they will answer questions later on.
Okay. All right, the public hearing regarding this case is now open. If someone would like to provide comments regarding this request, please raise your hand using the Zoom controls on your computer or press star nine on your phone, and you will be recognized. As usual, you have three minutes for comment.
All right. Dr. Brown, we have one person that raised their hand, Mike and Elaine Hall, so I will turn their audio on, and they will have three minutes, once that's turned on. So Mike and Elaine, you should be able to speak to us.
Got it. Thank you very much. My name is Mike Hall. Elaine and I live at 1746 Old Powhatan Estates. Thank you for providing this Zoom access. It makes it very, very convenient during this time of COVID-19 social distancing. It's a, it's a great idea. But, if I may, I'm certainly not opposed to any development in the county, obviously with limitations, but this, this company, you know, has, has, you know, had gotten the approval to move forward, and we're all fine with that. It's all good with that. My issue is, is they want it, they want a variance to move that entranceway closer to the crossover. So I want to speak to the traffic that is the biggest concern that we have about any, any of these projects on 60. I believe that if you look at the crossover at Page Road and County Line Road, as well as the crossover at Oak Ridge Drive, there is just no queue, there's no length for tractor-trailer trucks to stack up to take a left turn to go into, if they're traveling westbound on 60 to turn into this business, or to even turn on County Line Road, if there's going to be an entrance down that way. There is no left-turn lane to allow a queue of tractor-trailer trucks and cars to be able to take that crossover in a safe fashion without impeding the traffic actually traveling on 60. And then when they do take the turn, the cars traveling eastbound are going to come over that hill at Oak Ridge and, and without, without any real notification because the line of sight is terrible. You're coming off the top of a hill, come on down, and there, the trap, the tractor-trailers will be right there, turning, and either to the inside or the outside lane. And I can only see nothing but safety issues when it comes to traffic on either of the crossovers. The stack up, the backup of coming, traffic coming down Page Road onto 60 is going to get stuck waiting for the queue at the Page Road crossover. So there's an issue there. So if there's any development, any allowance for zoning variance, there has to be consideration of enhancements to the 60 turn lanes and crossovers, including sight distance changes, elevation changes on 60, whatever it may be. But certainly, long queue lanes or turn lanes, both intersections, just for safety concerns. And then how are you going to address the backup on Page Road coming onto 60? So, you know, I'm not opposed to development, but changing the process, changing the, the entranceway, I think is going to be a real impact on the traffic. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
There are, there's no one else that has raised their hand to provide any comments. I do have two written comments that were received during the comment period. If you'd like me to summarize those quickly for the record.
Yes, summarize for the record.
So there were two comments received. One comment was received from Debbie Weir, who lives at 1501 Page Road. She expressed concerns regarding how the revised entrance location will impact traffic flow on US Route 60. She expressed concerns with drivers making U-turns on US Route 60 to access the site at Oak Ridge Drive and at Page Road. She stated that she believes that there should be a direct crossover from US Route 60 westbound directly into the site, so drivers could take a left turn from the westbound lanes directly to the site instead of having to do a U-turn. If U-turns are the way the site is accessed, she would like to have the turn lanes at Oak Bridge and Page Road extended. And that was an email that was sent on Friday, May 1, and forwarded to the Planning Commission. The second comment I received via email was on Thursday, April 30. This was also forwarded to the Planning Commission. This was from Michael Hairpin. He lives at 101 County Line Road in Chesterfield County, and he expressed concerns regarding drainage issues on County Line Road and asked some questions about how stormwater from the site will be handled.
Okay. And there's no one else?
That is it, no one else has raised their hand, and those were the only written comments received. Chris Shust is the applicant's representative. Again, he's also on the call to answer any questions you all may have.
I'll start. Amy, do you have any questions?
No, not at this point, not with what they put in here.
Anyone else have any questions?
Assuming this is just approved, approved. I'm sorry, to approve the.
Well, I have, I have a question for Chris. Chris, can you talk about the water issues? Isn't there state requirements regarding this issue? I mean, it seems like it wouldn't just be addressed through this project. Am I right or wrong through that? Chris? I see his name, I just.
And he has his mic on.
Oh, I just saw his name pop up. Chris?
One possibility is, we've got a couple of call-in numbers. I don't know if one of those is Chris. He's having trouble. So if it is you, Chris, can you raise your hand by pressing star nine? And nothing's happening, so I don't think any of those are him.
I can answer that question for Barbara.
You're horrible.
Andrew, you're going to need to do the thing with your sound.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. I can answer the question on behalf of, of Chris. Every site in Powhatan County has to meet state stormwater management regulations, and those stormwater management plans are reviewed by DEQ. And DEQ has relatively stringent standards regarding the amount of water that can leave, leave a site post-development. So in this particular case, for Phase One of the project, they are submitting or showing stormwater management plans that have a variety of bio-retention basins and different stormwater management tools that will help reduce runoff and that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Any other question?
Question. Madam Chair, I have a question, a couple things. Um, I contacted our resident engineer with VDOT, Kyle Bates, because as the halls pointed out, I was concerned about the traffic and wanted to hear directly from him, because as I've said in the past, safety is a major concern. And he pretty much assured me that VDOT feels very comfortable, and it also was in our packet regarding the transportation. So, yeah. What it may be, that's in discussing it with Kyle. My other issue with the project, and I know it was kind of hard to see on our packet, but on better, prior, the March meeting, where they've got their entrance, which is great, because they're using an existing commercial entrance, and it separates entrances on 60 plus 625 feet, which is a real plus. I don't know if you noticed that it's got this funky little curve thing going on. And obviously, that is not anything that VDOT is going to look at. Andrew and I have talked about it several times. I'm just really don't understand, most time in commercial developments, it's a pretty straight shot into the property and enables perpendicular roads to come up. Since they do have expansion plans for property that they have acquired, to me, that, that entrance, the egress and into the property, entering and leaving should be a straight shot off of Anderson, off of Route 60. Did you guys notice that on your, on your drawing? That little curve, because, you know, being that it's an industrial facility along with the showroom, obviously, they're going to, there'll be a lot of I mean, granite, marble, supplies, so. So that's a concern of mine for the safety of the people and the movement of the traffic around the property.
Are you referring to this two little yellow, yellow sections on our copy?
That was from the sidewalk stuff. I'm talking, yeah, hold it up, Barbara, and I'll, I'll. Now I can't see yours, Barbara, it went away. But if you know.
I'm on too, Andrew.
I say I can share the, I can see if I can share the screen so that you all can.
I didn't have a digital copy that I, that would let me share it.
So can, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Brown, members of the commission, formally, this is Chris Shust with Ballzer and Associates for the record. I can speak to that.
Now, this, Andrew. That'd be great. Andrew, this looks a little different than what was sent, because it doesn't have that little funky like curve thing that was sent out in our electronic copy.
What she's showing is a previous version that Mr. Swindeman commented on. It didn't, I realize it didn't print outright on the print copies, but it is in the packet electronically on page 26. But this, but this is the latest version. Can you all see that on the screen?
Yes.
This is what, what Vicki's referring to, is a slight jaw.
Well, this is different than what was in the electronic copy.
No, the electronic copy has, this is the electronic agenda packet I have pulled up. The last page that Barbara showed up, that, that was a previous version that someone else had submitted their comments on, Carl.
Okay, all right.
Swindeman.
This looks good to me.
This looks straight to me now. I mean, what, what was, what I saw in the electronic, it still had that funky little curve like what Barbara held up, which I was very concerned. I'm sorry. Someone said something. Okay. Our. I just want to ensure the safety, once it's on the property of the traffic moving, since there's only one entrance and one exit, and cars and commercial vehicles will be coming and going.
So I don't know, I don't know if Chris can address those comments.
I sure can. Dr. Brown, members of the commission, thank you for your time tonight, just to make sure. Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
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 Sorry, I was on a different system, and it wasn't connecting properly. So the, this is the most up-to-date configuration of the entrance that we do have. It will have a right-turn lane and a right excel, and an acceleration lane out of the entrance. And it does satisfy sight distance that I heard Mr. Hall bring up as a question. We have done the sight distance profile, and VDOT has reviewed it. In terms of the little bit of the wiggle when you come in, that the development plan that we had submitted for the proffer amendment, at the time that that happened, the adjacent parcel on the west side here was not owned commonly with classic granite. Since the time of the application, that piece has come under common ownership. And while we showed a little bit of the wiggle here right now, we are looking at coming back with a site plan amendment after we get this approved, so they can start the building construction to actually make that a true T-connection. The east and west legs will have stop movements, and the north and south legs will have the, the right-of-way movement, so that traffic coming in off 60 will be the, the dominant movement, so that it's uninterrupted and free-flow. And then with the 90-degree orientation, I think that that addresses the question that you have raised, Ms. Hurt.
Um, Andrew, Mr. Pompey, may I ask, how do we assure that that will be taken care of? What is the proper route or method to handle? Yeah, even though it is their private property, their commercial property, I just think in approving a plan, we've got to be careful that the traffic flow is appropriate for the safety of the people using the property.
Well, I think this is one thing that we can work with Chris on as the applicant engineer during the site plan review and prior to the conceptual plan going to the Board of Supervisors. You know, this is, is a conceptual plan that comes with a zoning case, and we're looking at the high-level concepts at, at this stage. And this conceptual plan is much more detailed than many of the conceptual plans we review with re-zoning cases. So I think moving that, that entrance over 20 or so feet would be a relative change that we can work with the applicant on as, as we move through the proffer amendment process and the site plan approv, process. Now, that I know and the applicant know the importance of that circulation plan to you all and that particular element of it, I think it puts us in a, in a good position to, to work on that and address that through the site plan review process and through this proffer amendment process.
So staff would be overseeing that and present that to the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah, so we. Yeah, we can bring up that, that concern when the Board of Supervisors review the conceptual plan. The site plan is reviewed administratively by staff, but we can, of course, work with the applicant to address that concern and work with VDOT as well some more to see if they have any additional comments about that as well. So I think there are, you know, continued opportunities to work with the applicant to address those concerns, for sure.
Okay.
Any more comments for Chris Shust? All right, I think we're then ready for a vote. Amy, this is in your district. Would you like to offer a motion?
I motion to accept the proffered plan.
All right. There we go, okay.
You just.
Notion on the floor. Is there a second for that motion? All right, I'll make a second, and if we could have a vote. Amy, you want to start? I'm assuming it's I, since you made the motion. All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I.
All right, Bobby?
Nay.
Nay? Vicki?
Nay.
Jane?
Aye.
Now I'm going to vote aye on this project. Okay, it's three to two, the motion passes. And Andrew will be going forward with it, but also seeing that the Board of Supervisors is able to know the concerns about the traffic. Is that correct, Andrew?
That's correct. The staff report will show the comments and the concerns addressed by the Planning Commission.
Okay. All right. So then, uh, next thing, I think that's, do we have any further business to address on the, at this point in time?
There are no other agenda items and nothing under new business. The next meeting will be June 2, and there are two public hearings planned right now for that particular meeting.
Okay. All right, well, it's, it's that. All right, well, it's, is that we have finished our agenda for today. I want to, I want to thank you all for participating. I know it's awkward, but everybody did a very good job, and thank you to those in the community who also participated. Do I hear a motion for adjourning?
I move to adjourn the...
And I assume we had a second there with Jane. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Nice evening, and thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Be safe, yes.
Everybody.